So I'm going to get us started. Welcome, everyone. Tonight is the April 20th? No, it's not. Today is May 1st. I'm sorry, today's not May 1st. Today is June 1st. Okay. So as a preliminary matter, this is Pete Pecos. I am the chair of the or permit me to confirm that all members in person anticipated on the agenda are presenting can hear me. Planning board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Larry Murphy?
Yes.
Great. George Morse?
Yes.
Yes, Leslie Matthews?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Woody Knight?
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, and Mary Stone?
Yes.
Great. Town staff, when I call your name, please respond affirmative. Martha Taylor?
Yes.
Great. Emily's not going to be with us tonight, is she?
No.
Okay, great. So Martha, you're gonna have to help me out with who we have for speakers for this evening? Because I think I might have something a little askew in front of me.
Do you want me to resend anything to you?
No, I think I have the majority of everything you might need to. Yes, you'll need to. Because I'm looking at an older agenda, but I'm going to just do some introductory comments, and then I'm going to check in email. So, good evening. This is June 1st, 2022. Open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, which extends the governor's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until July 15, 2022. This order suspends the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely. So as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with deliberations of meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convened by video conference via Zoom as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website, in which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering media ID number 83271413056 or by calling 9292056099 and entering the meeting ID number one prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, that all attendees are participating by video and our telephone conference. The meeting is also be broadcast live through local access channel 9 or in Zoom and through www.tncctv.org. And recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to meeting for review. Applicants or the representatives may be called upon to speak, and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called upon. Before we turn to the first item on our agenda, please permit me to cover some ground rules for a clear and effective conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As a chair, we'll introduce each speaker on the agenda after speakers conclude their remarks. I will go down the list of board members inviting each by name to provide any common questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer with the mute button or your phone with star six to toggle to mute or unmute. When you are not speaking, please use earbuds, earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you, and you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Fern responses, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in any discussions with other members, please do so through me. Taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. With your guys' the public comment, there will be an opportunity for public commenting questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and or ask questions as follows. I will see questions and comments through the Zoom raise hand function for video conference participant to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the window, Zoom window and the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure that your name is fully correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more functions next to your name. For telephone participants, to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your key phone pad. I would then ask, allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click the raise hand function. Each participant called on to provide his or her name and address. And then ask a question and make a comment. For the applicant, participant, or his or her representative, the opportunity to reply, your hand will be lowered when you've been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those with the raise hand column and afford the applicant representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be any physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record. And again, the participants, applicants, representatives will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. Okay, each vote this evening, of course, will be taken by roll call. Now that that is done, let's move over to our agenda. So. May's financial report. Let's see, I think I have this as well. Planning board financial report for May of 2022. Note that some of these things were signed by the chair and the vice chair. Payroll warrants and planning board director and the planning administrator for PR 22-23 for pay period ending 5/7/22 for PR 22-24 for pay period ending 5/21/22. Planning board expense invoices for Verizon wireless planning board iPad for 5/23/22. Martha Taylor employee expense reimbursement 5/23/22 and as true consultant expense for 5/25/22. Espro council for Joseph Rocker for Governors Academy French Student Center as built on 5/23/22 and Joseph Rocker for Governors Academy PR CB construction inspections for 5/26/22. And I think that that concludes the financial reports. Okay, so I think we can move into the A's on reports. So we can start. Leslie, do you want to start with the select board?
Sure. There was a present two boys hoping to fly up to Eagle Scout to make their presentation for their civic duty. Patrick Sasso and Nathan Elwell, congratulations to them. And then there was a very long dog nuisance slash danger hearing that was very in depth. 105 High Road would like to give easement to Concom. It's under, it's under review right now. And the the chair, the select board voted in the, their officers. There was a lot of requests for use of public property. The and liquor licenses, business licenses. There was talk about the Newbury Town Day. The TA report had two grants. One of them was for about $67,000 to put towards the COA bus, which the Friends of the COA offered another $15,000 for that. And we still need to work on probably another $60,000 to in appropriations to purchase that vehicle. And then there was another sizable amount, and I'm sorry to say that I cannot remember what's like $250,000. But I can't remember to where it went. Sorry about that. And that's, that's about it.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. I'll get that.
Got it.
Beautiful. Larry, anything from?
To be a? Not much. The last hearing was a continued public hearing for some property on 1010th Street on the island. And that they did not conclude that it's been continued again to the next meeting, which is two weeks into tomorrow night. But that's really all I have to report. Nothing that I would expect to come before this board.
Great. Let's see. MBPC, do you have anything, Martha?
A few things. The commissioners meeting was held on the 19th. And they elected officers for the next fiscal year. Actually, this was actually the last meeting for this fiscal year. They will be taking commissioners out on a Merrimack River tour to look at some of the projects that they're doing on in June. They have applied to DHCD and EEA for grant funding for the housing production plan. Ours expires next year. And they had some fair amount of discussion about actually commissioner engagement, getting getting more engagement with sort of the commissioners and their communities. So they formed a subcommittee. And that will probably be talked about quite a bit next fall. The program managers then gave their updates. Then at the planners meeting on the 26th, their brownfields consultant gave a presentation on basically the services that they provide. They've got grant funding and also revolving or loan funding for assessment and for contamination mitigation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Concom will be meeting next Tuesday. And it looks like the agenda is going to be pretty full, so I'll get back to you after that. So let me continue on our agenda to see if there's anything we could do before our public hearings, which start at 7:15. Sorry, Martha, do you have anything under, under old business? Do we have Adam here?
I'm actually not seeing any of our anticipated speakers here.
So we
I have a very short planning director's report. I could give that if you'd like.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay. Just to pick up on what Leslie mentioned from the select boards meeting. The select board voted to authorize the Conservation Commission to accept the public access easement for the 105 High Road Seagate condominium as a gift. With that authorization, it now moves on to the Conservation Commission, who I believe it's on the agenda for next Tuesday, it should be. To have them vote to accept the easement as a gift. So I think remaining things, well, we've got one item of business for that on our agenda tonight. And I'm not quite sure if there's anything else that needs to be done before the condo documents actually get, get recorded at the registry.
Okay.
But we're nearing the end of
Good.
all the documentation.
Good. Wonderful.
And the only other thing, essentially the email regarding remote meetings. And I will keep you posted on that, but as it stands right now, the Senate has passed their budget, which includes an amendment extending the order allowing remote, completely remote meetings until December 15th of 2023. The House budget did not include that. So a committee is being set up to hopefully develop a compromise bill budget, which will include that amendment. So town council will keep us posted.
Okay, very good. Very good. Okay, and that concludes your report.
And I think that's, I think that's all I have.
Okay. Do we want to talk about old business, or do we want to hold off on that?
Say we've got what, two minutes?
Two minutes.
One minute.
Do you want to try meeting minutes?
Let's do that. So we have some meeting minutes, folks, that we've had the opportunity to review. And I believe so the the April 21st, 2021 minutes, everyone had an opportunity to review those.
Yes.
I have.
We got today.
So we'll do the first one first, the April 21st. Okay, any questions or comments on those from anyone?
I do have one. Given the comprehensive nature of these minutes, it's remarkable, but the only thing I found is on page six, under public hearing for the the cottage for the new restaurant on Plum Island. It refers to lots 154 and 154. I think that should be 153 and 154.
That is actually correct. That was corrected on another one, and I didn't catch that on this one.
It's also repeated, Martha, on the motion at the end of the hearing on that. So other than that, I thought it was very comprehensive and very well done.
So with those, with that minor modification or correction, any other comments? All right, then the motion.
I'll move approval.
Second. Motion is moved and seconded. Thank you very much. Discussion, motion. Larry?
No discussion.
George, discussion.
No.
Woody, discussion? No. Leslie, discussion?
No.
Mary, Mary, discussion. Okay, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Perfect. Great.
And the chair?
Chair was not present for that meeting, if I
So you're not, you're standing.
Correct. Then the second set of minutes, I think, just hit, hit us today. So I think we might want to hold off on approving it because I'm not sure if everyone had an opportunity.
I haven't looked at.
Okay, so but Martha, thank you for getting those to us. I appreciate it very much. All right. I'd like to get back to our agenda for a sec, and we're going to go to our public hearing, 7:15. It's a public hearing. It's continuous of a special permit application for ground mounted solar pulvertex installation at 75 Boston Road, Newbury landfill map, Arthur's Lot 27. Applicant is Alliance Newbury One LLC. The owner is the town of Newbury. Do we have anyone here to update us on that?
No, we don't. As you recall, Eric McLean submitted a request. It was supposed to be held last time, and Eric McLean submitted a request since we did not have a full board to continue to tonight, but I do not see him here.
Okay. That being the case, we can't really pose any questions to the applicant. So I, I'm going to ask if there is anyone on the board that has any questions at this point in time with regards to this? Okay, is there anyone from the public who has a question with regards to the current project? Okay. Martha, have you received any written comments at all?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Since the applicant is not here, Larry, do you think that we should be discussing the potential decommission bond? Would you like to hold off until we have the applicant present?
Well, I, I think that's the only issue left, but perhaps we ought to just move to other business and wait and see if the applicant shows up and address that later if they do.
All right, I appreciate that recommendation. And Martha, do you have any other comments or concerns?
Uh, no, I don't. Not trying to reach out to Eric now. And so do you want to basically continue, continue the hearing to later in the meeting?
Later in the meeting. That's what I would like to do. Thank you very much. That being the case. We'll move back to old business. Old business, Glasson Lane, 217, 221 High Road. Adam True requested approval for minor grading adjustments and additional clearing of lots one and two. And on 219 High Road and at 217 and 221 High Road, Glasson Lane subdivision. Approval of June 2nd, 2021. So Martha, can we just come up to speed as to where we are with this process? Because I know there's been some correspondence going back and forth.
Right, so I'm sorry. Emailing Eric right now too, so I'll try to do two things at the same time. So at the last meeting, we reviewed the revised, the proposed revisions, the grading and the clearing and selective or the printing selective clearing. And board directed me to draft a decision, which was basically approving those changes as a minor modification. Just a second.
Yep.
Sorry.
I appreciate multitasking.
Not great at multitasking these days. So after, so I was going to do that. The day after that meeting, I did receive an email from Joe Sirwodka, who expressed a few concerns. Some of them, I think, were actually based on the original plan that we had received and not the, not the second plan that the board actually reviewed at the meeting. So those weren't really relevant, but there were a few regarding stump grinding. He was concerned that that would impact the woodland, which is really supposed to be left in natural state. And also noted that there was, when we had been at the site, there was discussion about the fact that the roofs on the house on lot two did not have gutters. And so there was nothing indicating how the runoff was going to be managed. So the letter that we received from Scott today and the plan were intended to address those concerns. So we got those about 1:30, I think I did forward them over to Joe, but not with any expectation that we would get comments back. And I also actually wanted to see if the board wanted comments from him.
So at this, at this point, we're, we received information today from Scott, and that needs to then be kind of looked at by Joe.
Yes, I mean, I think it would be reasonable to review that with the board tonight, and Adam is here. And could probably speak to them, or I can pull the information up on the screen and just go through, go through that. I also do have the draft decision, which I sent to the board for review, but it would need to be amended, I think, to incorporate some of this information. If the board would like to go ahead and review that tonight and potentially take a vote. So there's some options here.
Okay, so let me see first if, Adam, would you like to kind of?
Yeah, I, Adam, through Gadsden Lane LLC. I guess I was Scott and Martha and Joe had been corresponding back and forth, and I guess at the last meeting, it had been drafted decision to go ahead and move ahead. In the interim, we received the comments from Joe, kind of, to me, feeling a little bit, little late. You know, like now we're getting comments after already to draft the decision. So I guess I was a little thrown sideways, but then I saw the comments and Scott was able to get back and address them. But you know, none of this was brought up at our meeting on site, nor any time between now and the last seven weeks since that meeting. So it's, I guess, a little bit like, you know, we're almost there to do something, and then we get a comment from seven weeks ago. So I'm a little confused as to why Joe's chiming in now about this when we're you know, I, I guess I'm, I'm really confused. We're doing some clearing within the limit of work. No wetland buffer application, and I guess we just, I feel like we don't need to be detailing stump grinding or not. We're not stump grinding, so. But and I guess the other concern was that runoff from the roof, because there's no gutters. Management of the water from lot two. So within the grading plan, I think Scott captured all that, all those concerns as, as I thought. And we did go over that onsite. But so I just, the only thing I was a little blindsided by was the stump grinding concern. And it just didn't make a lot of sense to me as to why we should amend it or change it in any way. It should just be for the same limited clearing ability that we're doing. And you know, if there needs to be modified language about stump grinding, I guess it could be. It's not going to offend us because we're not doing it, but it just seems like we always get a comment at the last second when we're about to kick something over the line, so. I'm a little, a little annoyed. I'll say that.
Well, I would say, don't be annoyed, Adam. Whenever we have things peer reviewed and things go back and forth, oftentimes we receive information very, very close to a hearing or of the day. So we always try to make sure that information is supplemented appropriately. But so Martha, with regards to some stump grinding, could you just help, just explain to the board the concern with regards to some grinding and what it does to the, the environmental impact of the, of the site?
Well, per Joe's comment, and Scott's initial letter dated May 16th said that they would be doing stump, stump grinding. Joe's concern was that to do stump grinding and bringing in some fairly heavy equipment to do that, he didn't see that it was something that was necessary if they were cutting trees that were six inch caliper or less. So that was the comment that went back to, to Scott and Adam about that.
Okay, so, so two weeks ago, I, we were notified it was going to take place. And so then there was a question as to why it was going to be take place. So that's where we're at now, Adam. Because we're only two weeks from that comment. So if that was submitted, that's why the reply came when it came, and that's where we're at today. So I would probably kind of put this back to your team and disseminating the information. So I'm not sure, I'm not clear. I'm not, I'm not sure if the board is clear as to whether stump grinding will occur, will not occur, whether that needs to be added to the draft.
So well, it will not be occurring.
It will not be occurring.
I don't think. Yeah, nope.
And that's been noted on the revised plan that we got today and also in Scott's letter, which we received today, that they will not be doing stump clearing. Stump crying.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just simply stating that in the future, you know, it obviously, we're, we're trying to do something here and procedurally, we get through it and we're about to be drafted decision. And then we get a comment. So if it'd be commented on before, that would be great. Because otherwise, it's a lot of back and forth to me. I just don't know what's going on.
In, in all fairness.
Brought up on the, brought up on the site review, you know, it'd be fine.
You know, in, in all fairness, I think we received the original plan from Scott. There were some revisions that were made. We didn't get the revised plan or the letter from Scott detailing the work that was to be done until May 16th. That was two days before the meeting. And it was just in what Joe scheduled for him to respond until.
And I think that's understandable. Yeah, okay, right.
You know, that, that's why. And I think he was expecting some of what we had discussed on the site, like the roof drainage to be addressed in the door. He didn't see it there.
Fair enough.
But the letter that Scott sent today and the plans both note that there will be no stump grinding.
Okay. Okay, the board members have any questions at this point in time, or would we like to go to take a look at the draft?
I just was looking for a little clarification on, on point number two. The plan calls for temporary grading easement for lot number one and number 219 High Road, et cetera. And the response was the easement notice, a generic term designating the site work that site work is necessary. The note on the plan has been updated. Adam, just so I understand, are you actually planning to do any regrading on lots number one and 219? Or you just need an access easement to complete the work on your property? You, you follow my question?
Okay, yeah. So, so on lot one and 219, we need access. And there's proposed clearing work on both lot one and 219, but no grading work proposed on lot one and 219.
All right.
Clear. Yeah.
All right, that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay.
Board members have any other questions?
I have none.
Okay, Leslie?
None.
Okay, Woody?
No, no questions.
And Mary?
No questions.
Okay. Martha, do we want to take a peek at the draft for review?
Sure. Would there be any benefit in my pulling up the revised plan?
Yeah, why not?
Well, first.
Yep, sure, that'd be wonderful.
All right, are you able to see that?
We can. Perfect.
Okay, good. So the changes, the plan is pretty much what the board saw the last time. So this, this orange line here was the original limit of work.
Could you make that a little bit larger, Martha?
I can certainly try to do that. How's that?
That's great. Is that good for everyone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So this, the orange line represents the original limit of work and where the erosion, erosion control was placed. This heavy dashed dark line is the, essentially the new limit of work. So they've expanded the backyard for for lot two and, and flattened it out a little bit, as Scott said in his in his memo. They've added a note. See, I might have to down here. I don't know if you can see that, the temporary access and alteration easement required from lot one and 219 High Road, which is what was just discussed. And then they've added a note, direct roof runoff to rear And then they've added a note, uh, direct roof runoff to rear lawn depression and away from the lot line. And, um, I think I need to scroll over a little bit. So the limit of tree pruning is shown here and selective tree pruning, six inch or less caliper, remove any dead wood. And then they've added a note, stumps to remain. So those are essentially, as far as I can tell, all the changes from the previous plan that the board reviewed.
Okay, Adam, are there any other additional changes that will be occurring?
No, that, that pretty well summarizes it. Yeah, that's, that's got it pretty well. Yes. So no other changes, no.
Okay, uh, board members, are there any questions with regards to these? Larry?
Um, no.
Okay, thank you. George?
I reviewed the plan with the changes, so I have no questions.
Thank you. Uh, Leslie?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Woody?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, and Mary?
Awesome.
Okay. Okay, and yet the concerns, Martha?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, then, um, let's, uh, can we take a look at our draft? And I have one question. Adam, have you, have you, uh, idled out the concerns of, uh, in the butter with regards to screening? Because I know there's been some correspondence with regards to that.
Uh, yeah, so with the, um, Charlene Random, which would be the closest to this property, we've, we're all set and we're actually planting the beginning of next week with her, get some plants done. And then with Mary Ann Sheen, um, who's the next neighbor up, she is about to be away for two weeks. And we just corresponded with her and we're sort of still working back and forth on what could happen and whether it'll be on her property or potentially now on the Gadsden Lane properties, uh, to screen her. So there's been some back and forth several times with Mrs. Sheen about what, where, and when. And we have not come to a complete agreement yet.
Yeah. Does it make sense to have it done on the Gadsden Lane property? That way you have control on it and you don't have to worry about anybody else's property or access to, or if things fail?
Yeah, I think that that's kind of where we are at. And that was the last suggestion I made, uh, that maybe we could screen and buffer her without having to be on her property. So hopefully that can, uh, rectify itself and we can, we can make it happen and, and screen her and get her concerns taken care of.
Okay, so if you're going to be doing it on, basically on your, on your project, on your property, when should we, should we expect that that would be concluded? Just so we have.
Well, it might be relatively soon, but we, I need to first, I guess, get her to agree, um, if Sheen to agree that that will be adequate screening and where the screening is going to be placed is in a kind of difficult location because it's also the back edge of a septic field. So there's not a lot of room between the edges. So I, I have to look into the feasibility of it. But if, if the plantings can occur there and, and we're both satisfactory in the screening, that would be ideal. And we'd like to be able to get that concluded and done in the next month or so.
Okay, I, I just think it's important that we button that up because I know that this started a long time ago.
Yes, it has, yep.
Okay.
And we've been kind of back and forth a lot. And I think Martha's been on most of the email chain. It's just, uh, trying to find some common ground where we can make it work. I don't, I'd, I'd rather do it on our property and screen her and then do it on her property and have it be her liability. So I think hopefully that's where we're at now and we can make it work.
Great. So that's the direction you're heading in?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, because the board would like to probably make sure that that comes to fruition.
Yes, yeah, of course. We've got all the other neighbors' concerns taken care of all around, uh, just privately outside of this.
I'm sorry, George, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I had a comment that, Adam, you said that there might not be enough space between the septic system and her line to put the planting in there, right? Just said that. Okay, so would, would the screening go on her property?
It would go on lot one's property. Basically, in between where the proposed home at lot one would go and Machine's property at two 25, or I can't remember the exact number that her property is, but it would essentially go in an area just a, just ahead of the, I guess, just to the west of the septic systems on lot one.
Okay, well, as I said in one of the early meetings, I'd like to see this in writing, signed out by you and Miss Ian, and you can give that to Martha Taylor.
Okay, we can work on that.
Good, I, I think it has to be.
Larry, any comments on that?
Um, no.
Okay, great. Um, any other questions at this time? All right, um, okay, so Martha, should we take a look at the draft?
Sure. Bear with me for a second. Nope, that's not it, sorry. Think I may have to. I thought I had it, but I don't seem to. Please bear with me for a second. Apologize.
Okay.
All right, are you able to see that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Make it a little bit bigger here.
Great.
All right, so shall I walk everybody through it?
That'd be, that'd be, thank you.
All right. Um, so the first, first part is just kind of an explanation of what this is. Procedural history, which will need to be modified to include the information that was submitted today. Um, so on the 14th, we did have a site visit to talk about, uh, the proposed changes. The two plans that were received on May 11th and again on May 16th. And that this was placed on the agenda for the planning boards, May 18th meeting for discussion. So that will need to be amplified a little bit. Submitted materials and information, the original letter from Scott dated May 16th. The two plans that were received from modifications, the first dated May 6th and the second, May 16th. Uh, the authorization letters from the owners of lot one and two, 19 High Road. Um, so we would need to have the new plans to that. Um, and then the findings of determination that per condition P of the definitive subdivision plan decision, the board has the authority to allow modifications, um, which are determined to be minor modifications without a public hearing. And then a general finding that the proposed grading adjustments on lot two and selective pruning and clearing on lots one and two and two, 19 High Road can be approved as a minor modification and do not require a public hearing. And then conditions of approval, um, approval is granted only for the grading adjustments and selective pruning shown on the plan. This date would need to be updated. Stump grinding, I had a question about this based on the comments. So that would be revised to say stump grinding will not be allowed. Three is the area comprising the vegetated filter strip on lots two and three shall remain in its natural condition and shall not be disturbed or impacted by the proposed selective clearing and pruning a lot two, uh, no pruning or clearing within the 100 foot wetland buffer. Then no further clear cutting and no further expansion of the lawn area on lot two, no further clear cutting on lots one and two, 19 High Road. Because as you recall, looking at the plan, the line, the, the line was, the tree line had been moved a little east and south. The tree line and associated limit of work on lots one and two and two, 19 High Road shall not be moved any further east or south from the tree line and limit of work shown on the modification plan. And then the board reserves a right to consider any future proposed revisions, together with revisions approved here in its cumulative. Reject any interim preliminary progress changes unless and until changes are prepared and proposed. So the board has the opportunity to consider the effect of any proposed changes to the entirety of the project, project and its approval and the related plans and conditions being integrated whole. Um, this is language that had been in the previous one for one oh high, one oh five High Road, since that's a condominium on one single parcel. This is a subdivision. I did cross that part out. Suggested that we continue to include the language of this will be, um, recorded at the registry of deeds and that everything else on the approved definitive subdivision plan remains to be in full force and effect.
Okay, so, um, I just need to clarify that what has taken place is in fact, uh, a minor modification rather than major modification. Uh, Larry, your thoughts?
I, I, I'm comfortable that it's a minor modification.
Okay, great. George?
It's minor.
Wonderful. Woody?
Yes, I, I think it's minor based on the information that's from, from, but.
Thank you. Uh, Mary, uh, I'm sorry, Leslie?
I'm in agreement.
Okay, thank you. And Mary?
I'm in agreement as well.
Okay, great. Um, so it is just to conclude, Martha, I understand that Joe is now on the same page, uh, as Scott.
Um, well, Scott has addressed the questions that Joe had. Um, Joe hasn't had an opportunity to review the new information, but it seems to address those questions.
Okay. That being the case, I would ask, I would entertain a motion, um, to approve the decision as amended to incorporate the, uh, the new materials and any comments that we need to do, uh, and that this proposed changes are a minor modification. So uh, I'm sorry, was that George that, that made the motion?
It was Woody, I think.
Oh, Woody, thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Uh, thank you, George. Uh, on the motion, uh, discussion, uh, Larry?
No.
Thank you. Discussion, uh, George?
No.
Thank you. Discussion, uh, Woody? Done. Thank you. Discussion, Leslie?
No.
A great discussion, Mary?
Yeah.
Okay, on the motion, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mary, how do you feel? Beautiful. I cherish some favor as well. So Martha, would you make this?
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time tonight. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Adam.
Thanks, um, thank you. So I'll, I'll make those amendments and get it ready for signature.
Beautiful, great.
Awesome, thanks so much.
Okay. Have we heard, heard from Eric yet, as of yet, Martha?
Let me check.
No.
Okay. But that's okay. So we will continue, uh, with our agenda, uh, for, uh, new business, uh, 105 High Road or, or S R D, a request for 105 Seagate LLC, Max Perro, uh, member manager for release of performance covenant. Martha, where are we with this?
So as you all recall, the, um, the tripartite agreement was approved, it's been executed and recorded at the registry. And so the performance covenant, basically that was superseded and, and supplanted by the tripartite agreement. But as a, um, basically kind of a housekeeping measure, it should be, the, the performance covenant should be released.
Okay, uh, that being the case.
Received a written request from, uh, from Mark DiPiero, um, to that effect on May 24th.
Okay, all right. Uh, I entertain a motion, um, in, in this regards.
I would, I would, um, move whereas 105 Seagate LLC, Newbury Port 5 Cent Savings Bank and the Newbury Planning Board have entered into a tripartite agreement to secure compliance with the terms and conditions of the special permit for Seagate 105 High Road regarding performance guarantee. And said tripartite agreement has been recorded with the Essex South District Registry of Deeds and Book 40939, page 471. I move that 105 Seagate LLC be released from the town of Newbury, Massachusetts. Planning Board Covenant dated February 24th, 2022 and recorded with the S, Essex South District Registry of Deeds and Book 40749, page 388.
All right, thank you for that motion. Uh, Larry, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you for the second, Leslie. Uh, discussion on the motion, discussion, Larry?
No.
Thank you. Discussion, George?
No.
Uh, thank you. Discussion, uh, Leslie?
No.
Uh, discussion, Woody?
No, no discussion.
Thank you. Discussion, Mary? Okay, on the motion, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Uh, George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Leslie. Uh, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Thank you. And Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Okay, and the chairs in favor as well. Uh, thank you very much. Okay, um, we had a recent, uh, individual joining us. Is that Eric by chance?
Doesn't seem to be.
Okay, uh, then continuing, uh, on with, uh, our new business, we're going to, uh, require the board, uh, to vote its recommendations for people to be appointed for the board, uh, for fiscal year 23. We're going to need to appoint, uh, an associate planning board member. Uh, currently, Mary is, uh, a current, uh, associate, uh, member and has indicated she would like to continue on with that, uh, position. Uh, so I would, uh, like to thank Mary for volunteering to do that and glad you're here. And I would entertain a motion, uh, for such.
To approve Mary's, uh, continuation.
Larry, uh, I'm sorry, Larry, we're going to say something?
Oh, I was, uh, same thing Leslie was going to say, said, rather.
Thank you for the motion, uh, Leslie, uh, second to the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Larry. A discussion on the motion, a discussion, uh, Larry?
No.
Thank you. George, discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to hear how it was made. Martha, will we recommending or suggesting that the board is selectmen?
Yes, typically the, the board will, the planning board will, will vote to recommend the appointed positions to the board of selectmen or the select board. Um, I believe that they're going to be voting on these at their meeting on June 14th.
Okay.
So what I will do, based on, on the board's recommendations that are voted on tonight, I will send a letter to the select board. You know, stating what those recommendations are.
So any motion is for a recommendation or suggestion that they appoint?
Yeah, recommendation that they appoint.
Good, okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, discussion, uh, Leslie?
None.
And discussion, Woody?
Uh, no discussion.
Discussion. Discussion, Mary? Okay, great. How do you vote?
I vote yes.
Wonderful. George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote?
Hundred percent, yes.
Woody?
Yes.
All right, Mary, how do you feel?
I want to thank everybody. I'm honored to be with you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Glad to have you with us. Um, okay, uh, our next, uh, recommendation to the select board would be for, uh, MVPC Commissioner currently, uh, Martha is our NBC PC Commissioner and our alternate has been Larry. Uh, and I understand that Martha, you're willing to continue as such?
If, yeah, if the board is willing for me to do so.
Okay, and Larry?
Uh, yeah, unless someone else has an interest in it, uh, I'd be willing, be more than happy to continue as alternate.
Okay, um, any, anyone, any comments? Any, anyone, any comments on that? Okay, if that's the case, then I'd entertain a motion that we facilitate that recommendation with Martha being the commissioner and Larry being the alternate. Someone like to make that motion? So moved. Thank you, Woody. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Leslie. Okay, discussion on the motion, discussion, Larry?
No.
Thank you, discussion, George?
No.
Discussion, Leslie?
No.
Thank you, discussion, Woody?
No.
Discussion, Mary?
No.
Okay, Larry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody, George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote?
Another hundred percent.
Thank you. Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Wonderful. And Mary, how do you feel?
Absolutely.
Beautiful. Chair is in favor as well. Good. And so that'll be happening. The select board will be making their fiscal twenty-three appointments at the fourteenth meeting. Is that in two weeks?
Um, yes.
Okay, wonderful.
That's that's my understanding anyway.
Okay, great. Let's see. Do we have anything else on our agenda, Martha?
We just don't check here. I. Don't see anything else that hasn't been covered other than the hearing.
Okay, that being the case, Larry, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing. Since we don't have the applicant here to address us.
You want to, Martha, you want to continue to our next meeting?
Yeah, I think so, as long as we're. As long as everybody thinks they'll be there. So we'll have a full board because I know that's been a concern for the applicant.
You haven't heard anything from them?
No, I haven't.
Can I ask another question? Are they, have you had any discussion with them, any sort of meeting of the minds and what the appropriate bond amount should be?
No, I I had informed him of what the recommendation was and didn't really receive any feedback.
Okay, I guess maybe we should continue with them. I'll move to continue to our next meeting, which is.
June fifteenth.
June fifteenth. Thank you. What's seven fifteen PM?
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Leslie, for the second. Discussion on the motion, Larry?
No.
Thank you. Discussion, George?
No.
Thank you. Discussion, Leslie?
No.
Discussion, Woody?
No.
Discussion, Mary?
No.
Thank you, Larry. How do you vote?
Yes.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie. How do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Woody. How do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary. How do you feel?
Yes.
All right, the chair is in favor as well. And if I understand the agenda completely, we have reached the conclusion of our agenda.
We have, just to clarify, seven fifteen PM via Zoom still.
Thank you very much. Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Ah, thank you. There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Larry. Discussion on the motion, Larry?
No.
Thank you. Discussion, George?
No.
Discussion, Leslie?
No.
Discussion, Woody?
No.
Question, Mary?
No.
Okay, Larry, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you, George?
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie?
Yes.
Thank you, Woody?
Yeah.
And Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Wonderful. Everyone, thank you very much. Martha, thank you very much.
Here in favor of adjourners?
Favor as well. Yes, thank you. All right, guys.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Yes, thank you. And have a and have a good evening.
Good evening too.
Thank you.